Sure, Carl. Okay, it's recording.
There it is.
Oh, I just did. This is the agenda for the meeting of Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. It's seven o'clock. In accordance with Governor Biden's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Chapter 20, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com, and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via livestream at WHCA TV. It will subsequently be broadcast on youtube.com. And we'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance over Brian Sholder. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag
Of the United States of America And
And to the Republic which stands One nation under God indivisible with liberty
Liberty
and justice
For all
And we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company, and the first item of business is the reorganization of the board, so I'll pass the gavel over to Frank.
This is my moment. I would like to open the meeting to nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
If I may, Frank, I nominate Kyle Kowalski as Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Brian.
Dan and Brian, are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
He's on mute.
Has either left or he's muted.
I think he waved, and
Ah, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the chair is yours.
Okay, I'll have, I'll accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Chairman, this is Brian. I'd like to nominate Dan Salbucci for Vice Chair.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that. Randy Almatina seconds.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Randy? Brian?
Yes.
Hello, yeah, Brian. Justin? Is somebody seeing Justin? All I see is a very handsome
He's muted himself.
Yeah. Be nice to get a vote.
Yeah, I can unmute him, so.
It's just showing a picture of him with a mute.
Okay, I'll, I'll, yes, Dan. Okay, so we're gonna have to call that
Yeah.
four zero. Okay, now nominations for Clerk.
I'll nominate Brian Bazantin.
I will second that.
Is there a second? Okay, any other nominations? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Oh, you're back, Justin.
And Brian.
Sorry.
And I will, I will, I will vote yes as well. Justin, do you want to cast a vote for an election we had about a minute ago for
Sure.
Dan as Vice Chair? So it doesn't look, so it doesn't look
I'll say yes. I'm the on-call engineer tonight. I just took a call from a pipeline.
Okay. That's fine, thank you. Thank you, guys, for
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman.
And hopefully, hopefully we'll get through a very interesting year without a lot of controversy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to congratulate you and Ms. Almatina
Absolutely.
on your recent, your recent election. A pleasure to have you back.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Yes, congratulations.
Yep. Same here, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the pizzas, Randy.
No problem.
And now for, I'll take a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
Dan, a motion?
Brian second.
Is there a second?
Yes, Brian.
Brian? Any discussion? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And then a motion to accept correspondence in the readout.
Yes, I'll go to, yeah, motions.
Brian second.
Brian second. Any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Ah, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian? Randy? And I'll vote yes. First item on the agenda is the Town Administrative Report. The first item on that agenda is the update of COVID-19. Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things I'd like to do with the board's approval. Seeing the progress we've made, I would like to resume normal schedules for employees beginning next Monday, July 6th. That would be all employees working in their respective offices with social distancing and being available for a full schedule. I would also like to, the following week, July 13th, open the town hall by appointment for persons seeking to do business. My plan is to install a temperature station, checking station, which is automated, in the vestibule after entering the handicap door entrance. The handicapped entrance would be the only entrance that will be accessible to the town hall, and all personnel will come in that door and pause to verify temperature is within tolerances. Any individuals who wish to meet will make appointments. Person or department with whom they're meeting will greet them at that door and provide them admittance. The doors would still remain locked for control purposes. We will set up two stations in the auditorium, probably on either, on opposite ends of the entry doors to allow people to meet with townspeople in a space-appropriate area. And if that's acceptable, I'd like to move forward with that plan.
I have one question, Carl.
Yes, Dan.
Frank, when you say that they're gonna go in the handicap door and they're gonna have their temperature taken, will the person greeting them at the handicap door by appointment, say the treasurer needs to talk to, the town clerk needs to talk to somebody or whoever, they, the department head or somebody in their office?
Well, no, we're not, it's not that we're taking temperature. There will be a scanning device which will be mounted.
Okay.
And when you stand between the two, two poles, they're, they're set up like this, five feet apart. It will scan, it will scan the body for surface temperature. If it's elevated, we're gonna tell people they need to leave and see if it's not elevated, then they'll be admitted. We'll people to wear masks, encourage people to wear gloves. We, you know, we're, we're, we're just turning the corner on this, and there's 19 states that are resurging right now. We're not one of them. I want to be able to provide what service we can with reasonable safety standard. And, and I think that would do. I'm not looking at opening either the senior center or the library until the end of the summer.
Okay. DPW, has the commissioners talked about that?
DPW has been in full operation the whole time.
No, no, I mean like if somebody wants to get a dump sticker or whatever.
They're handling that on a call-schedule basis.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
Do we have a couple hand sanitizer stations down there also, Frank, or?
Yes, yes, and I'll add another one.
Okay. And, Justin, do you have a hand up? Yes, Justin?
Yeah, just that, you know, anyone visiting the town hall would be wearing a mask, and I believe would town hall personnel be wearing a mask when interacting with them?
Yes. We actually have, we have one department that is somewhat concerned about any movement, so we've agreed that anyone entering that area, employee or otherwise, will be wearing masks. That's at their request. We are not requiring employees while working to wear masks unless they feel it's necessary or their work group is seeking that protection.
Are we, are we sure of that? Are we sure that that's the right way to go?
We've been operating that way since May.
All right. So, so each individual group is like its own bubble and they
Is, yeah, there's, there's, there's one group that, that for whatever reason, two of the employees have a concern, and we've respected that by insisting that anyone going into that office wear a mask. Next week, I'm going to arrange to have that office converted into a window access area with what do they call that? With a plastic barrier.
Articulation.
It won't, yes, so it won't be necessary to actually enter that often.
So, so what's the logic behind a group of people deciding not to wear masks while they're working together?
There's no requirement as long as you can safely distance, social distance yourself. And our office does not wear masks except when we're meeting with someone and we haven't had anyone coming yet. The clerk's office does not wear masks. The building department does not, and the assessors does not. And they're all comfortable working with one another with the understanding that no one is taking inappropriate risk. I guess the challenge for most of the employees is wearing masks periodically is not difficult. Wearing one all day while working can be tiresome and uncomfortable. It's available for anyone who wishes to.
Right.
They want that added section.
Okay. It's just that they're not, they're not in their office 24 hours a day, so there are other periods of the day when they're out doing other things. And so I guess, I guess each group of people trusts each other to take the necessary precautions when they're not in the office. Is that?
That's what it seems right now.
That? That I'm hearing? Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Is there any state guidelines on that, Frank, as far as?
You must wear masks if you can't social distance.
Okay. Okay, I excellent. The next item on the agenda is a Carlton Street extension. Justin had fielded a complaint about a week, about a week ago. It had to do with, it had to do with people speeding on Carlton Street, and we had asked the, the police department and the DPW to look, to look into it. Frank, can you go over what they came up with and what they saw?
Yes. There are a couple of options that have been suggested, and I'm going to meet with DPWN Police next week to see if we can come up with a finalization for recommendation. But the Superintendent Public Works has noted that the area in question has a number of signs that indicate caution that children at play. The interesting thing is the current recommendations are to not use those signs. That the, the sign sends a message that it may be safe for children to play in the street where, in fact, no one should be out there. So the standards do not recommend using children-at-play signs. You may put a caution sign speed, but our safety officer was unable to get to 30 miles an hour driving that street because of the turns. So if there were to be a reduction in speed limit, we would have to rely on the Modernization Act to reduce speed following the guidelines from 2019. And I'd like to see a recommendation for a specific speed limit. And the, there is no support. In fact, it is not recommended that we put speed bumps in the street as had been suggested by the person complaining because it creates a hazard. The police do have enforcement in the area periodically, and if these solutions don't work, there are two significant options. One is to make the street one-way in measuring where the traffic seems to be busy. If it's heading up onto to Rehner, then we would make it one-way coming from Rehner. And the other option is to close one end of the street so it's no longer a through-street. So I, the, the chief is away right now. I'd like to sit down and meet with him and with the Superintendent of DPW and see what that consensus on the best approach.
Okay, does anyone have any thoughts? I know I've been done.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yes, Dan.
All right. One thought, there were three, there was a element that was put in, in Hingham down by the shipyard, and they put in speed bumps. And it's funny, people that wanted it, and then all of a sudden they were complaining so much about the speed bumps that they end up grinding them out and taking them down. And now they're not there anymore because, you know, be careful what you wish for. It just didn't solve the problem, and it was more of a hazard to the people living in the area who actually wanted it in the beginning. So they ended up taking them right out.
And while we have limited liability, that doesn't prevent someone from filing a suit alleging that our modification to the street caused an accident.
Right. Right.
We're insulated, but we'd still have to defend ourselves.
Yeah, I drove down the street a couple of days ago, and there were three signs that were up. It didn't say children at play. One of them said children. One of them said slow children, which is, I don't know if that's a kind of child or whether they were telling us to go slow. And, and the other one said deaf child. All three of them have been there for quite some, all three of them have been there for quite some time. There were, there were like three-foot weeds around a couple of them that were growing up the side of the sign. So they've been there for a while.
The, the other
Apparently, the signs have not had an effect if the complainant is, is not overreacting to the situation.
The other option for signs is to put a slow curve sign up on either side of the bend, but I think the street bends twice, so I don't know if it's as significant an issue as it's presented to be, but, but we'll look at that and see what the options are.
Yes, Justin?
I was actually, yeah, skeptical about that myself, and I reached out to a good friend of mine that lives on the street. He confirmed he's yelled at a few cars driving by, just going way too fast. So it's something worth looking into.
Because that, my reaction was it's pretty difficult to get up to speed with that corner right in the, in the middle of the street. Basically, that sharp, sharp corner.
Well, the other thing is, small streets, when you're driving, even if you're driving at 25 or 30 miles an hour, seem to be an excessive speed when you see people driving through. When we got the gems, the electric cars, they were locked to 20, I think there was 26 miles an hour. And I remember driving one down Rock Street and a guy yelling out, "Slow down." And I stopped to ask him what the issue was, and he commented I was probably doing 40 miles an hour. I said, "I could only do that if a car got behind me and pushed me."
Yeah, the yeah, I, well, years ago when I was growing up and taking the driver's test, we had to observe 20 miles an hour in a thickly settled district, which was a place that had houses, you know, that are close to each other. 30 miles an hour is, is, is not a safe speed on that street.
I agree.
If you get it down to 30, it's not a safe speed on that street. So I can see the gentleman's alarm. So maybe, maybe a lower speed limit. But it would be good to hear what the, it would be good to hear what the chief and the, the commissioners think.
I think that's a good point, Carl. I will review the, the local authority that was granted to us under the Governor's Relief Act and see what we would have to do to adjust the speed limit. I agree that that street should be no more than 25. And, and if you put it, if you put a lower sign limit there, people are just going to ignore it.
Right.
But, but if we were to do a 20 or 25, or maybe a 20 at the curve, that, that might have some impact on people.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. With you, Frank?
Okay, the town received approval from the Department of Revenue to adopt the 112th budget that was voted at our last meeting. I circulated that budget today to all budget managers, reminding them that because we will not have a budget approved for fiscal '21 tomorrow, which starts the fiscal year, we will be operating under the 112th option. And everyone is encouraged to recognize that where we haven't established the budget, financial restraint should be exercised in any spending that we do until we meet on July 27th and actually vote an annual budget. There is also the remote possibility that something could prevent us from meeting on July 27th, so I've also asked the accountant to prepare a 112th budget for August, and that will be presented as well. We have also sought and received approval to use our July 1st, 2019 free cash, which is what we used in building our budget initially. Normally, on July 1st, the free cash is closed out and would not be available to us until we set the tax rate. Fortunately, the state has allowed us to continue to carry the free cash and to make it available. If we follow the budget plan that's contained in our warrant, we will end up with, I believe it's $833,000 in free cash after making all of our appropriations. And ironically, at that point, we'll start working on the 2022 budget. Kind of makes my head shake a little. The, the school is an issue. They are, as of tomorrow, on a 112th budget. Ryan is having trouble connecting. And their, their 112th budget is a little more astir than, than ours is. Hopefully, I think we need to stand firm on the budget that we've created, including the budget that supports education for Whitman Hansen. I, the budget is built on the assumption that we meet in the middle in a transition from the current budget method, which is agreement, to the statutory method, which is what most communities in Massachusetts that are regional are using. And hopefully we'll see support for that when we go to a town meeting on July 27th. I'm still waiting as to talk with the moderator to see whether the thought is to hold it inside or out. Either way, it's gonna be hot on July 27th.
Anyone have any thoughts that'd like to add at this point about the, what Frank has just talked about? I, I too think it's critical that we support selectmen's version of the school budget, including the, the 50-50 so-called compromise amendment. I think it's the, the only real way for us to help the schools to transition from this year to, to next year. One that helps that, well, it's the one that they proposed. And I think we ought to do like Whitman has done in the past, is, is support education as much as it can, and Whitman has had a history of that. I'm gonna use the next month to try to talk Dan into it so that he doesn't get up on town hall floor and, and argue against it. I understand why he does, and I understand why Brian may also, but I think we're gonna have to use some energy in, in the course of the month to try to convince him that the, the only, the best thing to do for the students of our system and for our system itself is to go with the selectmen's recommendation and not the finance committee's recommendation on the, on this, on the school budget. Sort of connected to that is some correspondence that I received from the chairperson of the Hanson Selectmen a little over a week ago. It was, it was kind of a long, long discussion of the events that led up to, to the situation that we're in now. It talked about the, the discussion talked about this statutory method. It talked about Chapter 70 rules, et cetera. It kind of echoed things that have been said already in, in the Whitman Hansen Express. But it also spoke about the finance committee's two-page ad and the way it was paid for with the suggestion that it would, there was something inappropriate or illegal or in, in violation of, of state law, and, and they're doing so. And the two members from the finance committee taking out the ad and paying it for themselves. The last par, I won't go through the whole, the whole email, because most people are aware of everything that's been, that's been said. I know that the Chairman of our Finance Committee has, has spent some time in the Whitman Hansen, expressed, expressing his dissatisfaction with their reaction in Hanson. But her last paragraph said, "As town officials," and this was directed to the Board of Selectmen. "As town officials, these actions should not be tolerated. First, the Whitman Board of Selectmen and the Whitman Town Moderator look into the improper, if not illegal, actions of the individuals involved. Mission, we urge the voters in both towns to do their own due diligence and to vote on the proposed compromise amendment to the Whitman Hansen regional agreement accordingly," and signed it, signed the Chairman of the Hanson Board of Selectmen. Interesting that it said to, it said to use their own diligence and to vote on the proposed amendment, not whether to vote positively on the proposed amendment. But that's, that's another story. So she basically asked us to look into it. So I had asked Frank to have our counsel review the, the charges that were encased in that letter. Basically, whether or not the, the people from the finance committee did anything illegal in taking up the, the paid ad, or was there an ethics violation, a conflict of interest violation? And you have received, I believe, a copy of our counsel's advice. And then basically, our counsel said, "No, they saw no violation, either, either from the Ethics Committee point of view or from the Office of Campaign Finance point of view." Remind also that the, that the Selectmen have no, no authority over the, the Finance Committee, no line authority. They're appointed by the moderator. I thought so. I've asked Frank to send a copy of this report from our, our town council to the, to the Finance Committee and to its chair, and let them know that as far as their review of the legalities or illegalities involved, that the Finance Committee is, is safe. I don't know if anybody wants to get into that, but just wanted to let you know that that's, that's what's happening. And Frank, you have sent it to the Finance?
Not yet. I wanted the board to see it first. I will do that following our meeting.
Anyone have anything to say? Anyone have anything to say? Randy?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to go back to touch on just the the school budget real quick. Like you said, it's what we're recommending is although there may have been a better financial path, there is not a better path that supports education and supports the school district and supports the growth district. And it's just to clarify, it's a two-part piece that one will not work with the other. You can't can't say you support the budget, not the amendment. You you need them both to pass. Us. And I just want, I I didn't believe to know that, that to say one is to only say you're, yeah, we support that budget, it's kind of verbal semantics, because we know that our partner community is going to struggle to get there. And if we really do want to preserve this relationship and and make sure we're not going to be losing teachers and staff and putting our kids further at risk, then it's 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 a two-part puzzle, and we need both of them.
Thank you, Randy. I remember back in the the old days when the K through H system reported to our town meeting and had to justify each line in the budget. What would happen historically in those days was it was at the school department. The teachers, the administrator would rally the troops, and they'd get all of the parents that they could find to that meeting to devote their budget, sometimes to the const most of the time to the consternation of our finance committee at the time. Those are interesting times. It didn't always work, but very often did. I hope that our I hope that our school department is exercising that same diligence in rallying the parents of the children to pay attention to to our town meeting in July and also in Hanson. Hanson people to pay attention to the town meeting in July and to take this this very seriously. That's all I have to say. Anyone else?
The only other thing.
Justin, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I I was just gonna ask Frank. With regards to the FinCom recommending a budget, it it's my understanding of the the D E C regulation that they are not allowed to change the budget recommending from the school committee, correct?
They can recommend a budget that is less than what the school committee is requesting. However, all that does is reject the budget. It has no other action.
Okay, I I mean, I could have been wrong here, but I I think at least the regulations with the D E C say that the budget voted by the school committee has to be presented to the appropriating body, which would be town.
It does. And that's what happens is the meeting will will have have the school committee's requested amount and the finance committee's recommended amount. And then the voters get to choose. Now, one of the things that will come up is the fact that we don't have a consensus Whitman and Hanson. We can vote the budget that that we have recommended, that is what appears on the warrant. And if that budget is voted, that appropriation is made subject to the companion appropriation from Hanson. If Hanson's budget does not support the difference that's assessed by Whitman Hanson, then the budget itself is rejected. Our appropriation is available but can't be used by them until a budget is established. So conceivably, what could happen is down the road, a budget less than what was requested gets approved. What would happen then is we would have an overappropriation, and that money would have to be further appropriated. It couldn't go to it couldn't go to Whitman Hanson as an as an excess appropriation.
Anyone else?
So.
I I just have one other question, and it's actually something that I would like you to look into, Frank, if you can. You read out to Jeff, or it it's something that was said in their meetings. If we were to pass a budget and then Hanson refused, it goes back to the school. Now, an interesting comment the other night was if if they if within the forty-five day period, another budget didn't get passed, that possibly our vote would stand as their budget.
Only if only if Hanson didn't vote. In other words, once that approach, once that assessment is made, both towns have forty-five days to vote the budget. If Whitman were to vote a budget and Hanson failed to vote, didn't didn't reject it, didn't accept it, within forty-five days, the budget would pass. So they have to take action at a town meeting, either to accept or reject the budget.
So if we pass it, Hanson doesn't, and it goes back to the school.
Yeah.
And they can't get a budget out in forty-five days, does the budget pass on that same kind of that same scenario?
They could. Actually, there's there's no minimum time limit. If if on July twenty seventh, we vote a budget, and on July twenty ninth, Hanson votes a lesser budget, the school the following day can spend another assessment, which can be the same budget or a different budget. And then, once again, if it's the same budget, we've already acted. If it's a different budget, then we would also have to act through a town meeting. I, you know, that that I'm trying to think of who it was that said, why don't we just jump to the district meeting? And and that's probably their frustration talking, but I'm hoping that between now and July twenty seventh, that reason prevails. The other thing that came up yesterday is apparently section ten of chapter seventy was amended in November of two thousand nineteen. And that amendment took effect February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty, because any statute that doesn't pass with an emergency preamble passes ninety days after it's voted and signed by the governor. That amendment took out the language regarding the the calculations that D E C provides for minimum contribution in local aid. However, it didn't change the statute. The statute still requires that they assess using the statutory method. So while some people seem to think that that changes how chapter seventy money is distributed within a district, I don't believe it does, and only because I couldn't get to it today. I will be sending all of that information to Nancy Campini tomorrow to ask her to review this and give us an opinion on what she believes the impact of that change is. But I I I believe it still requires that if we don't have a budget, the statutory method is used.
Justin. I read it. It did not change that. It was basically apportionment.
Right. But the apportionment is is a part of the assessment when the statutory method is used.
It it so to kind of put it in a little bit layman's terms. What it was was this, the the breakdown of local aid, which we we have been arguing consistently. There was a change that was supposed to be enacted when the Student Opportunity Act came into play. Where the question lies is because that has now been delayed, are they delaying the chapter seventy funding? But there there was no, they they're still basing everything off your foundation budget, your minimum local contribution. And like we had spoken earlier, like Jeff said the other night, out of the eighty-six regional school districts in Massachusetts, there's only ten that use an alternative method. And that will probably change because of the changes that they've now made through the Student Opportunity Act, where a lot more focused on your your minimum local contribution. So although we were a little late to the game, and some people have questioned why this is the way it's moving and and you know, for Hanson, so it's a tough pill to swallow, but it it now it's now's the time.
Dan?
Okay, I've kept quiet, but now I think. Just keep in mind, the FinCom is recommending the budget of the fifty-five million. What they're doing is they're what they're recommending is they call the price to Whitman and Hanson through the statutory assessment and doing some numbers. Whitman's assessment is fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Hanson's assessment is eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven sixty, it's one hundred and seventy-seven. Now, that's because we have more students. We're still paying four million dollars more with the statutory method to the school system. So whether or not it passes the statutory or the fifty fifty Article seven, the point is, the town of Whitman supports the school. We're just supporting the way it's being paid. We're supporting the fifty-five million. It's just that we, some people feel that we shouldn't be paying part of Hanson's bill. My mind, at the fifteen million, three, six, and seven and change, Whitman's got two two thousand, two hundred and forty-two students. So that's like six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars a student. But the town of Hanson, with eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one seventy-seven, they have one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine students or seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars a student or six hundred and thirty-six dollars more a student. So we're still paying more than Hanson because we have more students. We're still supporting the school system. They're fifty-five million that they're looking for. What we're talking about is the responsibility of each town and how they should pay the bill. It's that simple. To say that if Article seven doesn't pass, and we don't go with the fifty fifty, that the town of Whitman does not support doesn't support Whitman Hanson's school system is dead wrong. And the fact that Hanson failed their eight hundred thousand dollar override, which would have gone to their portion of paying because it go into the statutory, and that failed, and you had an ex-member of the the Board of Selectmen that was really pushing to not pass it, tells me that the town of Hanson doesn't care. But the town of Whitman does, supporting the fifty-five million, just was supporting the method in which they're getting it. That's simple.
If I may.
Yeah, Randy, you you're gonna let us know that it's not exactly that's why.
Yeah, well, I I do agree with Dan that we do support our school system. D E C recommends us being anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent over our minimum local contribution. Where do we sit? Up around the twenty-nine to thirty percent mark? We're obviously there. We're obviously supporting education, no doubt. If you look at where Hanson is tremendously underneath where where they should be. This is a matter of, unfortunately, Dan, it's not, the Whitman's school system can swim and the Hanson one fails. It's sink or swim together, and are we going to make it work? And for the budget to work this year, we need to offer Hanson it some help of what what basically and ultimately comes down to two hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, did they offer us help last year when we had to take eight hundred and forty thousand out of us stabilization to offset?
You know, sometimes you do the wrong things for the right reason, and I personally, and that's where my vote went, and that's what I will try and sell. I know, and we sit on different sides of this, but this is, I believe, everything that Superintendent Sosmiak says. And I think we're going to lose a lot of teachers if we don't this deal going through. And to me personally, it's the best way to go.
Okay, and if, in fact, Article seven passes, but it doesn't enhance it, because it looks like it won't because they didn't pass the override, then where do we go? We go to a grand meeting.
Well, no, no, then you're going to go back to the the school committee, and the chances.
And they're going to have to either cut the budget. And where do they cut the budget?
Well, I don't know. They don't necessarily have to cut the budget. I I personally don't even think they get a budget out of their committee at that point, because listen, if fifty fifty didn't work, that's the best we're going to offer. We have made it made them a fair deal. I don't plan on extending any more than that. So they should know tonight, if they're watching this meeting, this is the best deal you're going to get. You've now been presented with all the facts. You can either save a substantial amount of money and support the amendment when it when it hits your town meeting, or you pay more. That bill is coming. Whitman is offering. Whitman is trying to be a good partner now. We have been all along. We've presented accurate facts.
Well, we'll see where they go, because I I don't I don't think that's going to happen because their their override failed. And they're very specific about that.
Unfortunately, Dan, they're they're be it seems like they're being governed by somebody who's on social media and shaming their leadership for not presenting the proper facts and and standing up for their town and not letting one particular gentleman speak for them. And and that's it's a shame.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. We'll see what happens.
Brian, you Brian, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I was having some internet issues. I wound up going to my phone, so thank you for your patience. I can say that last night, I listened to the school committee meeting from start to finish. And whatever way you fall under this particular situation, you have to realize that it sounds very dire, and and I could feel the pain in this superintendent's voice and his mannerisms as to the seriousness of the situation. And, you know, between the budget that we have going on, adding in the COVID nineteen aspect of it, the online learning, the possible loss of forty teachers and 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 staff, it it it's daunting. I I would imagine he's got some sleepless nights. And I I have to say that I I agree with Dan in principle that, you know, we've done enough. And 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 I understand Randy's point of view that, you know, sometimes you take a bitter pill, maybe for the greater good. So this is a very tough. And 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 it's going to come up to the the citizens to decide how they want to go with this, but it's you know, I urge everyone who's watching this meeting to go back on the Green Channel's YouTube page and and listen to that meeting before you make any vote, because it it was very sobering. And and I I just don't think that Hanson deserves our sympathy, but it might have to be done to save the system. So, you know, that's going to be a deep down in your heart question come town meeting. I I just wanted to get my opinion across.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. It's one more, one, if if Whitman can, by spending two hundred and eleven thousand dollars more than it needs to get us all through this year, and if Hanson does the right thing at their town meeting, I think that we have we have a lot to be proud of. And I'm certainly hoping that both of our town meetings go that way.
And and one other thing is, you'll have to remember, and I might have missed some of this with my difficulties with the internet, but the the time is ticking on this, because if this one twelfth, which apparently is been approved, we've got till December, and then the state takes over, and then you don't know what's going to happen.
But Brian, even more importantly, they have two months to come up with a budget before they have to lay off a significant number of people.
Right, right.
And that's that's really the 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 race that we're in right now, that they've they've already started July. July, and because of the way the teacher's cycle of pay is, they can get through July, and they can get through August on 112 budgets. They cannot get through September on a 112 budget. And I, you know, I equate this with, occasionally, we get a claim, and we look at it, and we say, this is crazy, why should we do this? Then we analyze what's involved in handling that claim, and it makes more sense to take care of the nuisance claim than to spend a fortune fighting it. And that's really where this situation is right now, because if we take the high road and we support this budget, and it comes together, then we've accomplished that. If it doesn't, we've done what we can to make the best of it, but it doesn't change the fact that if this budget doesn't pass, it's going to dramatically change the quality of what we offer our children this year.
Yeah, and one other point, too, is if the state takes over in December, we don't know if they would increase our budget more than we're offering in this deal. So we could wind up paying more, I believe, if they come with a higher number. So, you know, you have to hedge your bets, I guess, but what it is that, you know, the district, the children's education, and, you know, these kids are fragile now as it is through all this homeschooling and masks and, you know, the news and everything else. And I would imagine there's going to be some increase in households that are going to be needed, and, you know, it's just a tough time to be a kid right now and not having to worry about what you're going to have teachers and enough money to keep the town school open.
I agree.
Right, and think what's going to happen when you have to have social distancing in the classroom if they go back to class, and so the classes have to be smaller. So there's this specter of double sessions. It's going to get crazy.
And what if we have a re-emergence of this back in, when we get to the fall, if this comes back again? You know, it's, there's a lot of unknowns.
I think you mentioned at last night's meeting that at three-foot spacing, we're going to be able to get about 24 kids in a classroom at the high school. So it's going to be a challenging environment. We don't need to add the additional challenge of not having enough teachers to address the need of kids.
Mr. Chair, if I could just...
Yes, Justin.
I just wanted to ask Frank quickly if he's received the copy of the 112 budget from D E C. I don't know, Jeff was expecting it today.
I have not.
Okay.
Okay, we done with budget review.
One other quick thing, and it's a positive note. We had a conference call today with Plymouth County, and the CARES Act is going to be a significant aid to us in covering the added expenses that we have had to deal with because of COVID-19. The funding is going to be more than adequate to cover our additional costs, so it will not have a negative impact on our budget this year. Don't know what happens if it stays around, though.
Plus, we're going to be adding in to our number, the region's numbers. Is that correct?
Yes, we're waiting, we're waiting for their numbers, but unless it's something really outrageous, the provisions that have been made should be adequate for Whitman and Hanson.
Paul, if I may?
Yes.
I got a letter, an email from Tom Hickey. We've had so far five town meetings of the district, and five have approved Souchau-Vortek's budget, and we have three more towns. We need one out of the three towns to approve it, which we'll always get, and that'll be approved.
Okay, thank you, Dan. You know, one of the sobering things that Dan said was that, under the present situation, given the number of students from each town, when he broke down the per pupil expenditures for those students, that Hanson, who pays less than we do, gives each of these, uses more money per student we do, or gets more money than we do. That's, that is a hard pill to swallow, so I totally understand Dan's viewpoint. It's just that, as Randy says, sometimes you have to do the wrong thing for the right reason. And if we can save this district this year by paying that $211,000 the way that Whitman usually does, I think it's worth it, because next year, it's at statutory. It's been, it's been pretty well hammered out. In the amendment to the regional agreement, that is worked out, that next year it's statutory. This year is a compromise, next year is statutory. I'm just hoping we can hold on for one more year and get through, get through this one without...
Right, and if, in fact, that does happen in towns meeting, if they vote Articles 7, yes, that's fine with me. It's their dollar. But then we'll see next year where Hanson's going to go with it, when it's going to be the full statutory, and see what they come up with.
Yep.
Because then it's on them.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, new business. Act on the resignation of Jill Getchel from the position of member of the council on aging effective March 11, 2020. Zero motion.
I'll make that motion with regret.
Your second?
Brian's second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let's see, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Act on the request of Barbara Garvey to be appointed to the position of member of the council on aging for a three-year term effective July 18, 2020, through June 30, 2022, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Brian, any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes, Brian.
That, Frank probably can answer. This is, that'd have to be a resident of the town to be on that?
Currently, depending on what happens at town meeting, going forward, all boards and committees have to be residents. That would not affect this appointment if the appointment is made before the town meeting. There's a lot of reasons why this particular request would make sense. Barbara has had 15 years' experience in the COA. They've hired a new director, Mary Holland, who currently is the assistant town clerk. Will be taking over there July 6, and I think it would be very helpful for that transition.
Okay, Justin?
Kind of a related question to what Frank just said, less to the appointment. Do we have a plan to deal with the town clerk's office between now and the November presidential elections?
Yes, we have, obviously, we have to post Mary's position in-house, or the vacancy in-house. Dawn has to make a decision as to who she wants to appoint for assistant town clerk. In the past, it's been pretty standard that the incumbent AA becomes the assistant. Certainly with knowledge of the office and all the other things that go with it, that would make sense, but we would then have to hire another employee. I spoke today with the representative of the Office and Professional Employees International Union to seek their consent to allow us to make a temporary appointment until we're able to actually hire someone and put them in place. So it is a union position. We do need their consent to bring someone in temporarily. Otherwise, we have to wait until we go through the evaluation process and hire someone. So either way, hope to have someone in place. In the interim, it's my understanding that a retired employee has some interest in helping out for a period of time.
Anybody else? Okay, we're ready for the vote. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Act on the request of Elaine Williams, administrative assistant to the Board of Health, for a line item transfer in the amount of $80 from line item number 206, assistant health inspector to line item 205, animal inspector. Zero motion.
No move, Dan?
Your second?
Second, Brian.
Any discussion?
Just basic balancing at the end of the year.
We'll go to the vote, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will, I'll vote yes. Act on the request of town administrator Francis Lyneham for a line item transfer in the amount of $405.60 from line item number 11, longevity, and item number seven, administrative assistant. Zero motion.
No move, Dan?
Your second?
Second, Brian.
Discussion?
We worked Lori too hard this year, so we're a little short on the pay.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Time to go into executive session. We'll be leaving open session. We won't be returning into open session. And we're going to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, exception 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public body. Just be a roll call vote. Dan?
Motion?
Yeah, motion to go into executive session.
Dan, motion.
Brian's second.
Vote, Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Let's have a, we'll have a motion to adjourn out of the open session, and we'll come back into executive session. Your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Okay, all people yell. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we're out of open session. We'll be coming back into the executive session. Frank?
I have just, I have just sent everyone a link to the...